Okay, we'll call the meeting to order because we are past the designated time. And I will remind the members of the public that the media and other individuals may audibly and or visually be recording this meeting. Welcome, Councilor Jackson. Changes to the agenda? Madam Clerk, are there any changes to the agenda at this point in time?
Yes, Mr. Chair, there is one change to the agenda. Added item 5.2 is a recommendation report respecting City Housing Hamilton Corporation mortgage refinancing for 500 McNabb.
Thank you. I need a motion to amend the agenda as has been presented. Moved by Conley, seconded by Pearson. All those in favor. Keres, thank you. Any declarations of interest this afternoon? Hearing none. I need a motion to approve our minutes of June 29, 2016. Moved by Councilor Aiden Johnson, seconded by Councilor Partridge. All those in favor. Keres, thank you. And I'm now going to call upon Tom Hunter to make his presentation. Tom? The floor is yours, Tom.
Yes, through the chair. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members. On behalf of the City Housing Hamilton Board of Directors, our residents, and staff, I would like to present to you our 2016 annual report. This is our opportunity to provide some context around the annual report, where we've had successes at City Housing Hamilton, where we have some challenges, and where we certainly hope to head into the future. Our mission, same as the city, to be the best place to raise a child and age successfully. In preparing for this presentation, I framed it around City Housing Hamilton's strategic plan 2017-2021. It is very similar to the city's strategic plan if you look at the vision, the culture, and the priorities. Here are the seven priorities, and where the information that I am presenting today deviates from the city's strategic plan is within each one of the priorities, there is specificity to City Housing Hamilton and our work. The first priority that I will be looking at is the community engagement and participation. And bullet pointed are the areas that I would like to cover off. A lot of work going on around community engagement and participation, but these are the areas I'd like to highlight this afternoon for you. Just around our step-by-step, this is our tenant council across all of our properties. I'm just showing for you a couple of examples of the events that they hold, and if you note some of the topics that they cover off, building a strong resident-led group, learn about social housing policies and procedures. So it's a real opportunity for these leaders within our resident group to engage other residents in their work and ours. Further to resident engagement, just want to highlight, on the left of the screen, this is Lisa, I just want to get her name right, Lisa Burton. She's one of our residents at 95 Hess, and she received the Tenant Achievement Award at the onset of the Provincial Conference for her work, her leadership around our healing arts and recovery with peer support. Great work for her. And also, I just wanted to highlight, we've had our ninth annual Resident Garden Contest, and this is the opportunity for our residents to showcase their work. We have over 30 community gardens across all of our properties, not to mention the numerous beautification work that is done by individuals on their properties or at the buildings. Also, around our community engagement and participation, one really important area is we're embarking on some of our development, is our consultation and work with our community. And with development opportunities, it's in fact mandated by the province that we have a communication plan. So these are just examples from the work that we've been doing at 500 McNabb, Jamesville, and Roxborough around our interaction with residents to keep them engaged and participating in future developments. Also, there's many partnerships that we have. Here I'm highlighting three. One is with the Hamilton Community Foundation. They have been a long and a great supporter of City Housing Hamilton. This year, they contributed $14,500 to our learning and leading through the Arts Program and our Arts Adventures Program, and also contributed $35,000 to the Threshold Program. I'll speak to that a bit further in the presentation. And with the LIN, the Local Health Integration Network, we are in a contract with them for roughly $100,000. We provide falls and exercise programs to over 12 of our seniors' buildings, and we have over 350 residents who are participating in that program. So a great partnership. And then also wanted to mention something certainly newer for us, Housing with Supports model, a lot of supports in our building, but this one in particular at 95 Hess and 181 Jux, and where we're looking at working with other city departments such as Ontario Works, ODSP. Also, as part of that partnership, a Hamilton Ermine Core Community Health Center, they're there in their buildings. It's all about trying to optimize the support that we can provide to our residents and really support them in their life activities. The next strategic priority that I'm going to speak to is economic prosperity and growth. Several items to touch on in this area. And the first, when we look at our education partnerships, we feel certainly this can help in the area of growth, not only growth of the individual, but in this particular instance with Threshold and Mohawk, help with growth in the construction sector. We entered this year into, I guess, a renewed partnership with Threshold School of Building, and with the council has certainly shown their support for affordable housing. And in this instance, with this tax exemption, it could mean as much as $875,000 that City Housing Hamilton would be able to put towards its maintenance budget. So certainly a very good start at starting to close that gap around what we need. Also, the $50 million Poverty Reduction Plan. Now, understanding that this plan still needs to go before council for approval, it does speak to the support and efforts that I think this council is making to change the affordable discussion in the city of Hamilton, I think, and in this province. And certainly, City Housing Hamilton, we would be appreciative, are appreciative, of any opportunities financially that come through the Poverty Reduction Plan. Okay, other part of health and safe communities, we're looking at safety and security. And this is the exit and the writing below. This is out of our resident handbook. And there was a lot, just like safety and security is a significant issue, matter on, across many of our properties, within our resident handbook, we wanted to make sure that there was a lot of direction and support for residents in that handbook, talking about general safety, fire safety, reporting unsafe, illegal activities, and how to prepare and how to prepare for an emergency. Also, with our board, this has been a real area of focus even, and at the meeting even prior to this, we were talking about the physical safety, physical security at our properties. Our board has made a $1.2 million support for a kind of general level of camera security across identified properties. Staff will be bringing to our board for our capital budget for 2018, a more detailed report around some of our high-risk properties. We've actually identified seven where we need to kind of step up aspects of physical safety and security. And also, in this process, we've been very, I think, sensitive to what is the voice of the residents. We've held focus groups with the residents, and they've identified their areas of concerns, also with staff. Often, our staff can feel at risk, that they're at risk in our building. So we had focus groups with them as well. We got some excellent data from Hamilton Police Services about our different properties and the number of calls that they receive there. We talked to other local housing corporations, what they do around safety and security. So it is, as we talk about health and safe communities as a priority, I think this is certainly one area that we know we'll need to continue to work on at City Housing. Okay, another area where I certainly think, this is a good, right now, a good success story for City Housing Hamilton around integrated pest management. Two years ago, this service was brought internally, and as you can see, the little blue dots, the smaller the dot, the better. That represents the response time to a resident when they're calling about pest control, the resident satisfaction, the bar is over on the right, that's a good sign. And when you look at those figures around total treatments, look at 2014 and 2016, the increase in the treatments that we're able to provide, and when you look at the budget, it actually reduced by $500,000 by internalizing it. If you, that represents a 50% reduction in the cost per treatment for pest control. Where we want to continue to focus our work is around information to, and communication with the residents, building on the team dignity model that we set up at first place, and finally, the number of recurring treatments. Some units were still having high recurrent treatments. We want to get that number down. And just finally, around the healthy and safe communities, just to show, this is in the annual report, this represents two pages of all of our partners. Now, we don't work with these people like every day, all day, but it represents, it does represent the people that we touch over the year and who we work with. So certainly, it is a community effort at promoting the health of Hamilton. Okay, then moving on to the next priority around clean and green, want to speak to the Social Housing Retrofit Program, also known Apartment Retrofit Program, oops, missed a word there, and our water conservation project, and that the building that you see here is 30 Sanford, where there has been significant energy retrofit work done. So the Sharp Program, this is, we did receive over $7 million from the province, and it was focused across the province for large apartments, so apartments of 150 units or more, so that we were able to do, able to apply this program to 13 of our buildings. Certainly, the goals are long-term sustainability, reduced energy costs, and I think very importantly for our community is the reduced greenhouse gas emissions. The focus for us was in the area of lighting and building automation systems. We anticipate that the savings for this program could be as high as a million dollars. So we remain optimistic. Our other significant project was a water conservation project. This was a bit of a first-timer for City Housing Hamilton in taking a loan from the city, a $1 million loan from the city. It's taken us a wee bit to get the project under feet and underway, but what we're looking at is 3,000 retrofits for toilets, showerheads, and aerators in 15 of our apartment buildings. And so we would estimate a 20% decrease in water consumption, and that would represent for us a savings of $200,000 per year. So when you look at, when you think back of that utility slide, that helps once again to close that gap between what we're budgeting and what we're actually expending in the area of this particular utility. But the next priority are built environment and infrastructure. And I certainly, you know, this is an area where I think there's some serious traction happening with City Housing Hamilton, and these are the areas that I will just cover off in today's presentation. The Social Housing Improvement Program, this was funding that we received through the federal and provincial government, $6.3 million, and it was for major retrofits and renovations. These, I identified some of the areas where we focused that funding. I think of interest with the unit turnover repairs, we did actually use $1.2 million of that to help us in our turnover and repairs in 2016, and that work is still ongoing at this point in time. The next couple of slides, as I move through and talk about our development, it's this quotation that I like to work with and think of as we do this development work, that the portfolio renewal of City Housing Hamilton is an opportunity to shift the conversation from social housing as a liability to social housing as a vital part of a complete community. And when we look at that kind of philosophy, some of our guiding principles that we're focusing on relate to maintaining affordable housing service levels across our city and within City Housing Hamilton. We want, we're a possible intensification where it makes sense, intensification of the lands, increasing income mix across the properties, certainly around quality design, accessibility, a big area that we would like to focus on, and energy efficiency, appropriate mix of unit sizes. And certainly, I think what can be unique to the work that we do, City Housing Hamilton, is how we build community and support capacity for the residents in our building. I did the schematic, which you see to the left. This is a possible future for 500 McNabb, also known as the Ken Sobel Tower. We're considering a deep energy retrofit to this program, sorry, to this building. And if, we're referring, it's a passive house tower renewal. This has been done routinely in Europe. If we were able to accomplish this here in Hamilton, it would be one of the first in North America. And it does, I'm gonna have to put my glasses on for this. It does talk about a high-performance external facade, which would have a high insulation factor. The balconies get converted to Juliet, so they eliminate thermal bridging, high-performance triple-glazed windows, external fix shading, and there's many other aspects to what would be this deep energy retrofit in this building. Understanding this would be a far more expensive project than would be, I guess, a standard renovation based on building condition assessments. At the end of this month, we are presenting to CMHC around potential grants and low-interest financing for this project, so stay tuned, we'll see how that goes. But it's very exciting. Even understanding more about how to make your buildings very energy efficient is great. And when, and just as an example, the degree that we're looking at here for 500 McNabb, essentially, there would be no natural gas to this building, maybe except to run a dryer, and the electricity cost would be decreased by at least 20%. And if we self-meter the building so that the residents would pay the small amount for their utility in their unit, that would take it down to a decrease of 70% around hydro. So some pretty interesting facts. The next development, which is, you know, creating, I think for us, some excitement and buzz, is Jamesville, and this has been in the work for a while, and it is the, that block there, and then the other piece here, my handshake, little piece there. And right now, we have put out an expression of interest to the community around Jamesville, that's right there, from May to July, so those will be coming in this month. And really, it's our opportunity to gain insight from the development community on the potential deal structure and maximum social and financial benefits with the design parameters that I talked about, and how that structure might work with a private developer, not-for-profit developer. That's what we're all hoping to learn from potential proposals. Then we would move into a request for qualification, request for proposal, and on the work goes. But it's out of the gate. The other, also built environment and infrastructure, the sale of our single and semi-detached homes. We have over 480 single and semi-detached homes in our portfolio, so we are looking at selling 100 of those. It has the potential, based on M-PAC rates, to raise $25 to $30 million. And our obligation to Housing Services, to our service manager, is to replace one-to-one. So for each house, it doesn't have to be a house, but it does have to be some type of unit, and certainly, we would want to rebuild it with the development principles which I spoke to earlier. And we've sold six so far. There you go. We're on our way there, too. Other development opportunities that I certainly wanted to mention to the group here today, one is Roxborough, and this is a housing development in the East End, and we're working with a private developer, Roxborough Park, Inc. We're also looking at 191 York, and this is an opportunity for affordable and market housing, and also providing space for community-living Hamilton. Riverdale, this is an opportunity as part of an expansion of the recreation center, working with the Hamilton District School Board and CHH. And this whole concept of housing and schools and hubs is getting a lot of traction. You've heard a lot about hubs, but most recently, with Ottawa Community Housing, they are looking at a development, they really spearheaded a development with their affordable housing and a school to be built on site. So this is a real area of interest. And also, Macassa here, using land next to our Macassa property for a building with single bedrooms for seniors. And that is what has been keeping us busy around built environment and infrastructure, culture and diversity. I'm sure people in the crowd may recognize their hands in this picture, City Housing Hamilton staff, and these are some of the areas that I just wanted to speak to, culture and diversity. And this is one area where we are taking our lead from the city and the work that they're doing on culture and diversity as well. We don't want to be duplicating what they're doing, but I think there are some things unique that we want to do at City Housing Hamilton. I just have, this is a kind of a favorite quote of mine, when we're talking about promotion of equality, this isn't a city line, this is really my own, in talking to residents and staff, to, things which are equal to the same thing are equal to each other. And to me, this is very important. So in the context of different cultures and how we are all different, yes, we are, but at the end of the day, we are all equal, and how we work and support each other is important so that we all can be successful. We are equal to the same thing and equal to each other. The promotion of inclusivity, this is another area of focus within the city, and where we can, we promote this at City Housing Hamilton. This is a page from our resident handbook, where the message is in, it looks like nine different languages here, for the many different cultures in our properties. This is just some pics of residents and events representing the rich diversity and cultures that we have. At the bottom right-hand corner is our step-by-step group and the award that they received. And just finally, around culture and diversity, I've raised and said several comments about accessibility, and once again, the opportunities, there are not enough accessible units in the city, and so wherever we can, what are the gains that we can make? And with, when we're looking at somewhere like 500 McNabb, or certainly in our Jamesville work, Roxborough, wherever it is, this whole question around accessibility, looking at the Hamilton standard, this schematic here, when we're looking at the 500 McNabb-Jamesville property, we would look at all of the apartments along one corner of the building being accessible with bedrooms and closets, washrooms, full-height operable doors, accessible kitchen. So we would promote, that is being promoted within that design for this property and others. Okay, our people and performance are, I guess, the last priority area, these are from, this is from the cities, our people, our progress, our plan, and what they identify as the key area. So once again, I'm just gonna pick some highlights from this. First of all, as it relates to our strategic plan, I'll talk to the operational review. So I mentioned, our strategic plan is very similar to the city's. I like to, one thing that we did differently is I think we took it just a step further around the collective action plan within the back of our strategic plan. Not only do we state the strategic priority, the key directions and key direction activities, but we've also identified a performance measure for each one of those activities. And in 2016, we had our operational review, and it was identified for, you know, by the surveyors, certain performance measurements that we should be having at City Housing Hamilton. So we've really taken this opportunity to, through our strategic plan, the operational review, to really dovetail what those performance measures are and what we want to achieve over the next five years. Also, around performance excellence, you might recognize some of these folks, there's Matt Bowen, you know, bombing the shot. So, but first of all, performance appraisals, we've completed performance appraisals on all the staff, but I also, we talk about results-based accountability, I'm sure you've heard Chris talking to council and staff, but, and, you know, not that we're there 100% at City Housing Hamilton, but we, I think we're really starting, and staff are really to understand what this means. So when we look at the work that we did around arrears, there's a perfect example where, you know, we set a goal, and probably 60% of our staff were kind of touched by this project, and as we mapped out the process, people understanding what their specific accountability was. And I think as people adapt that and, you know, work together, the outcomes that we achieved were pretty successful. And here, you see, Rika did this, she put together her arrears queen, 2.2%, Dave, you know, probably could be the king, very close to that. So, and other property managers have done excellent work around getting us down to 10%. But it's, once again, it's how collectively as a team, oh, and this was our celebration. When we got to 10%, we celebrated. That's, you need to do that, too. Also, what are the people performance, healthy, respectful, and supportive workplaces? I think with our divisional day, this is where, as City Housing Hamilton all comes together, the staff, it's really an opportunity to learn, you know, to share what we know. This year, we did it at the Hamilton Art Gallery, and all of the staff had the opportunity to express their creative side. So what you see before, these are just eight little paintings that each one of us got to do, so there's 100 or so. But here, we just picked some that represent what housing means to individuals. I quite like the Free to Dream, I think that's pretty neat, and would like to encourage that with everyone who lives with us. And then also, I just wanted to highlight for the council, our staff who received 5, 10, 15, 25, there you go, years of service. We also wanted to recognize our staff retirement. You know, these are the people who, you know, provide excellent service to our residents every day, and this is, you know, we're trying to acknowledge that regularly, but this is a formal way. There's 40 years, Nancy Lamont, one of our property managers, that's a long time, and she just retired this year, but she did have 40 years of service. And Sue DeBattista, she's still working in legal services with us, with 35 years. So the, oh, I just want to flip back.
Come on, get to it, please.
So, a couple weeks ago, I was, I don't know what I was listening to, but they were talking about what is your legacy? And, you know, we're gonna be losing an excellent manager at City Housing Hamilton, a manager of maintenance, Dave Pangborn. And so when I announced Dave's retirement, Councilor Jackson wrote what I think, what I think will be Dave Pangborn's legacy, "The world's longest accolade received from a counselor for service to the city and City Housing Hamilton." It was awesome.
We are sending that to Guinness, as well as a couple of Councilor Whitehead's speeches.
Yes, so, you know, I just kept scrolling down and scrolling down, but, yeah, congratulations, Dave, on your retirement. We are going to miss you. Also, a, oh, sorry, a huge shout-out to our Board of Directors, and, you know, our Chair, Councilor Collins, and they're listed here. All, just the understanding and the drive, I think, and the focus they have around housing, helping to keep us on track. And our community members are really engaged, and they are very interested in our work and are great contributors at the board. I work with a supergroup of managers, I have listed them here, and they're here today. I certainly wanted to thank Teresa, Teresa has, she's left us briefly, and she's over and planning economic development, but thank goodness she comes back to help us out on days like today, would be lost without her. And the property, our property managers, many of them, I think they're almost all here today, who's ever here is here today. So thanks for coming. And also wanting to recognize, also part of my team is Sean and Kelly, who, from development, and then Kelly from a HR perspective, provide great support. And just finally, throughout the year, Chris Murray has supported our work. So it certainly was my pleasure to present to you our annual report and the progress we're making at City Housing Hamilton. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Absolutely, yes. Very well done. Questions or comments for Tom on the presentation? If I could just, at this time, Mr. Mayor, if I could ask you to take the chair, I mean, we've been very blessed and fortunate to have Tom as our leader at City Housing for the few years that he's been with us. And as Tom just mentioned on the previous screen, he's surrounded himself with a group of very talented individuals, all of whom are here today, and a support staff below them that assists not just the board and the organization, but certainly first and foremost, our tenants. And I know historically, you know, we've had to grapple, like other organizations, social housing providers, with some image issues. And historically, I can say as someone who's lived in City Housing Hamilton unit for a portion of my life, the image of City Housing Hamilton and its previous names before the current one, you know, we've had our struggles historically, there's no doubt about that. But I think the team that we have in place, as Tom mentioned, supported by a very proactive and progressive board, we're making great strides, and we're not immune from the challenges that other housing providers face. And I want to say that council needs to be commended. You know, at a time when we've seen budgets scaled back, housing services in general has received about a 4% to 5% increase in their budgets over the last four or five years. So this area of the organization has outpaced some of the others that we've held to an inflation or below inflation cost. And I think it speaks to the whole issue of council treating housing as one of its top priorities, and as it should. And we've certainly struggled with renovations and repairs and a historic number of people. sitting on the waitlist, and that's all in the context, as Tom pointed out earlier, of not receiving the appropriate amount of resources from both the provincial government and the feds. And so while we certainly welcome some of the limited resources that have been passed along to us and some other housing providers, it comes nowhere close to what's required in terms of meeting the needs of our tenants, many of whom unfortunately continue to live in substandard living conditions. And we're certainly cognizant of that and not ignorant of that fact. But this council has been very supportive, certainly through area rating resources, certainly through one-time capital funds that we've put through the capital budget, and of course, the historic motion that the mayor presented in terms of providing housing resources. We'll go a long way to assist with the infrastructure deficit that we have and the other challenges that Tom raised on the screen as part of his presentation today. And we're certainly sad, of course, to see, as a footnote to this speech, you know, Dave's retirement and others who are on the list. And I think what's, you know, it's always unfortunate situation where you leave, you lose so much corporate knowledge and expertise, and we certainly, we lose that with Dave and the others that you presented here, Tom. But as I mentioned earlier, we have a very innovative and creative and proactive staff working alongside, and Dave's knowledge has been passed down, hopefully, to those that he oversees. And I know that there are others coming up through the ranks who have, who share his passion and his expertise and his desire to improve things for City Housing Hamilton. So thank you to Dave and others who've done a tremendous job. Certainly, thank you to you, Tom, for your presentation here today, and everyone who's in the audience from City Housing Hamilton, who certainly is making a good go of it under very trying circumstances at times. So that's it.
Very good.
Thank you very much. I'll take the chair back, and I'm not certain whether you.
Councilor Partridge and myself.
Yes, thank you, thank you, Chair. I just wanted to say that, Tom, great presentation, and I want to say thank you to the councilors who are sitting on this board, and to yourself, sir, as the chair, and to everyone. I don't think in the seven years that I've been here, we've been on more solid ground than we are right now with City Housing. And I'm just very, very encouraged, thank you, Tom, by the numbers, but also, you know, the future projects and the innovation that we're looking at in upgrading, always with an eye to saving money, always with an eye to, you know, addressing the pressures of climate change, which I think are going to be one of the biggest issues that we deal with in our lifetime, and with the commitments that the city has made and all these councilors to make housing a priority, because it is. It is right across this entire city, and we very much appreciate all your efforts as well. Thank you.
Ms. Ray.
Just to add to my gratitudes, you know, I'm a product of social housing as well, you know, grew up in affordable housing, geared to income housing, actually, and I remember, you know, the perception then was it was a liability, and I'm really heartened by your comment, Tom, on, you know, seeing this as a community asset, and that's exactly what it is. It helps people in our community, and I think it, if we take the attitude that we have an asset that we can build on, and I see that happening in spades here in terms of not only the work you're doing in existing buildings, but working with the private sector, which I think is a great step to take in terms of repurposing and relooking at what we, where we can get more value out of existing properties, and to be able to provide more, I think is exactly the right direction to take. So thank you to you and your entire team and the board for really taking this and starting to deliver an asset in our community as opposed to a liability. I think it's a wonderful attitude to have, and it's exactly where it should be, and I think the work is being appreciated and noticed. And even though we've put more money in, it's not enough, and we'll keep working on our federal and provincial partners to do more, because it's going to be a continuing issue, and the more that we can do to stabilize people's home environments, the better off we are going to be as a community. So thank you for all that great work. Thanks to everybody.
Thank you very much. Questions or comments? Hearing none, then I need a motion to receive Tom's presentation, moved by Councilor Aiden Johnson, seconded by Councilor Marula. All those in favor, carries, thank you. Then to the motion on 5.1, on the item itself, Madam Clerk.
Sorry, just a second, I want you to receive the actual report.
Yes, which I'm doing right now, yep. So on 5.1, moved by Conley, seconded by Pearson, all those in favor, carries, thank you. On 5.2, Tom, are you, sorry.
Yes, so I think the first motion I went to, Johnson and Marula, was to receive Tom's presentation, seconded by, and seconded was 5.1 itself, is that correct?
No, because that presentation is 4.1, there's two points to that, not the presentation on 5.1.
Okay, so on 5.1, then, moved and seconded, as I mentioned earlier, sorry, 4.1, is that right? Moved and seconded, 5.1, moved and seconded, all those in favor, carries, thank you. On 5.2, questions or comments on that which has been asked? Moved by Councilor Partridge, seconded by Councilor Pearson, all those in favor, Madam Clerk.
Sorry, I'm really sorry, I, I think 4.1 is the actual research point, which is the annual report, but then 5.1, the annual consulting statement is separate.
Yes. So now, you see us being where in the, where would you like me to pick up?
5.5, the annual consulting and reporting statement.
Pearson and Conley, all those in favor, carries, thank you. On 5.2, discussion on the added item, moved by Pearson, seconded by Vanderbeek, all those in favor, carries, thank you. 6.1, moved by Mayor, seconded by Councilor Vanderbeek, all those in favor, carries, thank you. On the other motion, moved by Marula, sorry, Madam Clerk, okay. Moved by Marula, seconded by Jackson, all those in favor, carries, thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Okay, don't go away, we're gonna have a special council meeting to kind of ratify that, so if you'll stick around. Okay, so don't go away, and we'll, brief.
Hello, sorry, is somebody there?
It's Dave.
All right, I will handle this. Thank you kindly, I'll call you. Thank you.
All right, we'll call the meeting to order, and, Madam Clerk, are there any changes to the agenda?
No, Mr. Chair, there are no changes.
Okay, I need a motion to approve the agenda as presented, moved by Pearson, seconded by Conley, all those in favor. Members of council, are there any declarations of interest? Hearing none. May I have a motion to approve the City Housing Hamilton Corporation shareholders' resolutions? Moved by Marula, seconded by Councilor Aiden Johnson, all those in favor, carries, thank you. Now I need a motion on the confirming bylaw, Mr. Murray, you have those?
Moved by myself, and seconded by Councilor Partridge, that Bill Number 17122 be passed, and the corporate seal effects thereto, and that bylaw be numbered and be signed by the mayor and the city clerk to read as follows, Bill 122.
All in favor.
Carried.
Thank you. And motion to adjourn, am I good? Thank you. Moved by Pearson, seconded by Partridge, all those in favor, carries, thank.